The Public Means Act Chapter 231, Public Laws of 1975. This meeting has been duly advertised by the South Jersey Times and Sentinel. Admissible clerk for township, but duly notified and requirements of texting notice have been met. If you would please stand for the question.
I am Abby Cissium, District Attorney of the District's Office. Launching under that, in this little thirteen just more.
First, we will call it.
Fellas?
Here.
Sally? Megley? Walensky?
Here.
Cunningham?
Here.
Blue?
Here.
Rosa?
Here.
Michael?
Here.
Trace?
Here.
Brad?
Here.
And four. Thank you. The first item on our agenda this evening is the presentation of our Perfect Performance Awards.
Okay, each October, we like to recognize those staff members that were able to avoid COVID, avoid illness, not use personal days, and show up and work every single day, which takes a lot, it really does. So I have certificates for our four employees that were able to do that, and we have a hundred hour gift card for each and every one of them. So when I call your names, they come up, we're going to get you to stand right up here. I'm going to take a picture, obviously, for the website and for Twitter. So first, Tina Cordio.
There you go. Congratulations.
Second, one of our presenters tonight, Abigail Sissium. Next, future principal of the Main Road School, Nicole Inversa.
Thanks.
And last, Amanda Yacabelli.
Want to jump in there and get a picture?
Sure. I'll get behind you.
Well, I'll jump in there since I got the guy there. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Perfect performance. I just had Mr. Walton to stack much later this year, so for you guys, it seems more important, more about how you achieved perfect performance. Congratulations. Is this our first presentation? You're coming out officially, like, full hair.
Full hair.
Yeah. The next item this evening is our Strategic Plan Update on Social and Legal Learning. We have this Leary, Mrs. Sissium.
So as you've heard, I'm Abby Sissium.
I'm Lindsay Leary. We are both teachers in the district and on this committee. So these are just the names of the members on our committee. It's made up of child study team members, parents, administrators, teachers, and the counselors from all three levels.
Our vision, we're trying to meet our staff and students on their level of need and supporting a healthy mindset. We're trying to plan events to improve school climate and culture for both staff and students.
So this is just some data that we have from last year. So as a team, we're tracking discipline data for baseline. We have observed elevated behaviors as in past years, and a closer look at the data across the district will give us a better understanding. In climate meetings, we're looking at common themes in the behaviors, like students in crisis, aggressive behaviors, unkind language, HIV. This way, we can design SEL events and curriculum to address trends. So the numbers that you see here are from last school year, and the ones from this school year will be updated soon.
So here is our strategic plan update from last March, when we presented till currently. The SEL committee is meeting bi-monthly. The 2023-24 schedule is made, we met in September, we are meeting again in November, and then so on. Each school's climate team has been, they've been developed for the school year. The SEL committee has planned monthly events for staff and students. The link to the SEL calendar is also attached on this part of our update, which is on the school web, or which is on the township website. Our SEL committee has planned professional development for staff in restorative practices, threat assessment, and crisis screening, which there is, there are crisis team members, and then understanding and supporting specific behaviors within the classroom. There are also subcommittees formed on our SEL committee that meet for professional development, discussions, calendar development, and meeting planning. Also, subcommittees meeting to review SEL curriculums and support morning meeting, which is currently ongoing as well.
So the next few slides are just some highlights from our different schools. So at Jambeere, we have lots of SEL-related school-wide activities and just fun classroom activities within the school. So the pictures here, there's a second grade science and math class, weekly character stars, Oliver Jackrabbits shining with good character and putting their stars on the wall, police officers reading stories to students from a PTA event, and first graders learning about apples.
And at Main Road, we have the Child Connections Center, which we call the CCC. We are in year two. Main Road has received a 27 scoring out of 28 in the first year of our implementation, which was last year. After successful first year, the goal, with the goal, it built better communication with staff, and it will include a monthly newsletter to better communicate with staff and the community. Again, there are links there, they have the CCC process, the September newsletter, which is also on the district website. They did have a back-to-school night table for Main Road's back-to-school night. Classroom lessons are, they go in the classrooms, the CCC, and do monthly lessons. They also do student observations and individual and/or group counseling, depending on the students' needs. Programs are individualized for each student and family. They may cover topics such as self-esteem, friendship and relationship issues, behavior management, stress management, fears or worries, academic progress, conflict resolution, social skills, and more adjustments to schools. They're just there, they're constantly making themselves available from the time they walk in the building until the time they leave, you'll always see them in the hallways, and they really are a good resource for the kids.
And then at Ritter, they have a student mentor program, monthly student activities, and a behavior and counseling supports.
So the next steps for the SEL committee, we are going to continue to plan district-wide events to support both staff and students. We will review the SEL curriculum options with the entire committee and compare them to our current standards. That we will continue to support staff in implementing restorative practices for students, keep the communication open between the district-level SEL committee and our school-level climate teams, continue to provide professional development to all staff, and continue to update our SEL webpage and display school events as they take place.
And that's all we have. Do you have any questions about anything in the presentation?
Any more members question? I have a question. Can you get back to slide two? I think it wants to be able to do that. That one, that one there. Any idea, like, if anyone identified any reasoning behind some of these numbers, like, if you look at February, can you jump there? Like, is there anything that you're noticing that would cause that, or you not have enough data yet?
I'm going to defer to you as a thought.
I defer to me and Billy as the principal, because I know they started collecting this as a baseline data, want to compare it this year to last year to see, and I know they disaggregated the data for where the building, things are happening, is it during recesses, is it during lunches, is it during the art, what classes? But I don't know content or any, all.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at October, February, obviously, that stands out, even March, students are getting more comfortable. You're looking at the longer lengths of the school year, between breaks, they're getting a little bit too comfortable sometimes, because they're surrounded with their peers, sometimes they start acting out in class, or become a little too comfortable with their peers, or they start misbehaving. And that's why you usually see those top ten stories at certain times of the year. December, I would probably say, Mr. Gordon, that at least two-thirds of that, if not three-quarters, were probably the first two weeks of December. You come to the third week of December, and it all of a sudden drastically decreases. But especially the latter portion of January, February, February, March, where they start making it up spring break, it's a long line for this year. So, yeah, our shortest month of the year has been, as you know, it's a pretty consistent, I would say, with other school years as well.
For all the schools, I would certainly support what Mr. Peters said, just in terms of upticks, particular times of the year, October, how shall we say, the newness of the school year has worn off, and at that point, you reach a point in the road where the children need to focus and hunker down and move forward, and some kids certainly do that with much easier transition than others. And then February and March, yeah, we can call it the winter dolphins, if you will, it's a long time of the year. And generally speaking, traditionally, there is an uptick, even before we kept data this way, but just monitoring from year to year, there's generally an uptick at that time.
Okay, that's why I figured around February, I start feeling my shit myself. So I was just wondering if there's an opportunity to kind of, you know, hold whatever programming you have with that on, and maybe more physical activities, so I think that's where everybody's up there, there would be pressure.
As a school team, as a school team, we'll look at their data individually and plan maybe some reward systems or things like that for different types, for different times of the year.
Correct.
They're just.
Yeah, that's one of the, I'm sorry, that's one of the things I know, I can speak for Main Road, on our agenda as we meet monthly with the climate team, is we look and we break down what each, you know, referral, or whatever it may be, what it is, and how we can come up with, whether it be an incentive, or, you know, what we could do to kind of stop it.
Right, right. Yeah, it's probably tough, and then when our moms get outside and, you know, do activities outside, and weather, and make that sort of, it'll be interesting to see how these numbers, you know, correlate with the board. Thank you.
Miss Trace, did you hear?
Thank you. You guys said that the CCC received a score in 27 out of 28. Can you explain the score system a little bit, like, how it was?
They wouldn't have access to Mrs. Lorleywood, it was something that I believe, Mr. Walton, were you in on that meeting? There's a rubric.
I was. There's a rubric that they use to evaluate, to ultimately go back to the state to receive additional funding to do that program, all the stuff of the district.
And who scores it?
Thank you.
So is it their best interest to score well?
Well, they scored our.
Right, but is it their best interest to score well?
Yeah, well, they, well, they, yeah, they're looking for state funding.
Right.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item we have is our student performance, district goal update.
It's your favorite time of year. Good to hear from me.
Just to know, Mr. Chasing, when he saw state performance, he was exactly, he thought he was going to see some students actually perform something. He was disappointed.
Sorry, just get me.
Yes.
All right, so I'm going to present to you tonight our state testing data, so our NJSLA, English Language Arts, Math and Science, and our fall testing data. So looking at our DIBELS data, our fall eye-ready reading and mathematics, as well as our fall math interviews and math reasoning inventory, and then we'll go into our district goals for the year, that's on the agenda for you guys to approve this evening. So first, taking a look at how we did on NJSLA for ELA, the numbers I know are hard to see, they're much easier once you get on there, once you're able to see the presentation on your screen. But for looking at grade three, for us, we have only had 21% of our student population pass, meaning that they scored in the meeting or exceeding range for the NJSLA, compared to the state, which was 42% of the state passed. We are on the top, and the state is on the bottom, when you're looking at this slide. So if you look across the top quickly, you can see majority of our students fell in the orange category, which is the approaching level, which is one level below the meeting level. For fourth grade, we were at 43%, and the state was at 52%. So we were definitely closer to them. The discrepancy was more in the exceeding range than in the meeting range for state testing. For fifth grade, 44% of our fifth graders passed compared to the state at 53%, and the discrepancy was more in the exceeding range, where they were at 10%, and we were only at 3% for exceeding. For grade six, we were at 34%, and the state was at 49%. Again, the difference being in the exceeding category, where the state had 11% of their students exceeding, and we did not have any of our students succeeding in grade six for language arts. Overall, when looking at the grade levels as a whole, 36% of our students passed the NJSLA compared to the state at 49%. This is our, sorry, by demographics, so our black students, Hispanic, multiple races, as well as white students, again, you're going to see majority of the students fell into that orange category, that one level below. You'll notice that is comparable to eye-ready as well, when we get to that data and information. As far as females versus males, there really isn't a huge discrepancy, they're relatively the same in how they scored in all the categories for NJSLA. Our free and reduced lunch students, they are mostly in the approaching and partially meeting category, as well as our 504 students. Our special education students, majority of them were in the not-meeting category, and the general ed students, majority of them are in the meeting category, but you'll also see it's a very close second in the approaching category as well. So I added all things to my slides this afternoon after you already received it, so you will get an updated version of this, but these are, this is our five-year look back on how each grade level has done on NJSLA. Grade three is not rebounding yet from the pandemic, which makes sense, considering how we took that step back in K1 and 2, and really focused on our areas of deficiency, honed in more on that phonics, and I explained to you guys a couple years ago, we were moving in this direction, and that it's going to take a little bit of time for us to get back to where we need to be. But I added the arrows on there, so you can see from third grade last year to fourth grade this year, how much growth, they went from 25% of the students meeting or passing NJSLA to 43% of them. That's a lot of growth for one year. Fourth grade has rebounded completely and surpassed where we've been before, when looking at the percentage of students meeting and exceeding. And our fourth graders last year, 37% of them were passing the state test, and in fifth grade, 44% of them passed, and they're the suns. So if you look at the sun, you can follow the sun to see that data. And the current sixth graders, where they were in fifth grade, 27% of them were meeting or exceeding, and in sixth grade, 34% was meeting or exceeding, and you can follow them by looking at the triangles. So each of those grade levels did show growth, and grade five is definitely on the rebound when they're, with their state scores as well. For our subscore data, this is grades three through five, because they report middle school separately, so sixth grade unfortunately is by themselves, that you'll see on the next slide. Our areas of focus, looking at this data and information, is reading informational text, reading and comprehending informational text and writing conventions. We are rebounding, as you can see, with the literary text, vocabulary, and writing expression. Fourth grade saw the most growth in their writing scores across our tested grade levels. This is sixth grade. Again, our focus is informational text, as well as literary text with comprehension and writing, and we showed the most growth in the vocabulary domain. So key takeaways here from NJSLA, majority of our students, as I said, are scoring in that approaching level, which is consistent with our eye-ready data that you'll see. Compared to the state, the percentage of students meeting expectations in fourth grade, it was the same. Fifth grade, we were in within 2%, and in sixth grade, we were higher by 1%, and that was just the meeting category, not adding in the exceeding. The five-year trend analysis shows that there is, there is some concern in third and sixth grade, ELA, that we'll be taking a look at, which I'll highlight at the end of the presentation, what we're doing. Fourth grade has rebounded with higher percentage of student meeting expectations, and fifth grade has made tremendous improvements and is trending upwards. Grades three through five showed huge improvements in their writing scores, and the focus area for all grade levels is reading and comprehending informational text as well as writing. So we're going to move into math. Again, we're at the top, and the state is at the bottom. So looking at third grade, when we add the meeting and exceeding percentages together, 39% of our students passed the state test as compared to the state, they had 46% of the students. And the discrepancy, again, lied within the exceeding. We were closer in the meeting ranges, and you'll see that across the board. Grade four, 42% of our students passed the state test, and for the state, 44% passed the state test. Grade five, we were at 33%, and the state was at 40%, and this discrepancy was more in the meeting range. We do have more students in the approaching category than they do at the state, so if you, my little green up here, the orange bar here compared to the orange bar here, we have more students in orange, and we have less in red, and less in this darker orange here. That is a good thing. Grade six, 41% of our students in math passed the state test as compared to 35% for the state. So we were above the state in our math scores for sixth grade. For our races, you'll notice here, again, typically, majority of them are in the orange, that approaching category across all the levels, except for our white students, more of them are in the meeting range, but the bars are really close between a meeting and approaching across the board. For males and females, there really isn't that big of a discrepancy, I mean, when you're looking at the green, the meeting and the exceeding, 34% of our females passed the state test as compared to 44% of our males. Free and reduced lunch, majority of our students were in the partially meeting and approaching category, so they were in the orange and the yellow. Our 504 students, majority of them fell within the partially meeting. Our special ed, majority fell in the not-meeting, and our gen ed, majority fell in the meeting. So I have the little emojis or symbols here for you to follow as well, but this is our five-year look back, when you're looking at each grade level, every grade level is rebounding, or they're on their way towards rebounding and surpassing where we were five years ago. Looking at third grade, which would be our current fourth graders, last year, 34% of them passed the state test, and in fourth grade, 44% of them passed the state test. So there was a lot of growth there. There was a small decline between grade four and grade five, which is the sun, if you're looking up there, looking at the sun. 38% of the kids in fourth grade passed the state test, in fifth grade, only 33%. There was a little bit of a decline there. And then from fifth grade to sixth grade, they've made a tremendous amount of growth. Last year, and this is the triangles, last year, 26% of the students passed the state test, and in sixth grade, 40% of them passed the state test. Taking a look at the subscore data for grades three through five, you can see our strength, or where we rebounded the most, most was in additional and supporting content, and our focus will be on major content, which is that grade level material. For sixth grade, there was great growth in all areas as compared to last year. We're definitely closing the gap in sixth grade in the major content and the modeling and application compared to where we were last year. So our takeaway is for math, is majority of our students scored in the meeting level. Compared to the state, the number of students that were meeting expectations was the same in third grade, below in fifth grade, and higher in both fourth and sixth grade. The five-year trend analysis shows that third grade is trending upwards, they did better than the last two years. Fourth grade and sixth grade has rebounded with higher percentages of students meeting expectations, and we do have some concerns for fifth grade. Grade six showed huge improvements from last year, and our focus areas in grades three through five will be on major content, and in grade six is on the additional and supporting For science, this is our fifth graders. Again, we are at the top, the state is at the bottom. Majority of our fifth graders fell in the limited proficient category with 45%. 26% of our fifth graders passed the science portion of the state test with 27% of the state passing the state test. So we were right there compared to the state. Majority of the state fell into the red and the yellow, where majority of us fell into the yellow. So we did, we have less students in the red, which is a good thing. For our programs, free and reduced lunch and special ed, you'll notice that most of them are in the yellow and the red for science, and our gen ed students, majority are in the yellow. For our races, you can see here, again, majority of our kids fell in that yellow category, which is the one level below meeting. Our females and males, there's not much of a discrepancy there, except for only 18% of our girls passed the state test, where 34% of the boys passed the state test, with majority of the students being in that yellow, one, one level below category. That just summarizes what I exactly said. Moving on, our DIBELS information, so this is for the beginning of the year, and more than half of our students are core or core plus, which is green, in grades two, three, five, and six, and they're not far from it in fourth grade. So up here, it looks a little weird, on my slides, they're green, this looks green and yellow, so the yellow, if you will, is core, and the green is core plus. So you add those two together, and that's where the red percentages come from, that's where I'm saying half or more than half of our students fell in the category of being core or core plus. I also put the same icons on these slides as well, so if you wanted to look at how the cohort of students did last year, you'll start with the triangles in kindergarten and find the triangle in first grade. And then in first grade, if you look at the arrow, you'll see another arrow in second grade at the bottom, and then there's the sun, and there, I called it home plate, because Phillies were playing tonight, so I said I might as well put that on there. But what you'll notice is that, well, you won't notice up here, because this is the composite score, but digging down deeper into the subtest areas, for kindergarten, our area of focus is correct letter sounds and phoneme segmentation. In first grade, phoneme segmentation has improved steadily. So in 1920, we were at 44%, of our first graders were emergency on phoneme segmentation fluency, and at the beginning of this year, only 17% of our students are emergency. Phoneme segmentation fluency is the greatest predictor of reading difficulties as our students get older. So we have put more phoneme segmentation fluency activities in kindergarten, and you can really see how that translated to first grade, with only 17% of the students being emergency in that category. We'll also be taking a look at oral reading fluency and nonsense word fluency in first grade. In second grade, MACE, which is the test for comprehension, as well as words read correctly, that is our area of focus. It's no longer in second grade that we have to drop everything and go back to the phonics and go back to the, back to the basics. Those gaps are being. Those gaps are being, are being filled. In third grade, our areas of focus are nonsense words for words read correctly as well as MACE, which is comprehension. So just as I told you a couple of years ago, we had to swing that pendulum back because we had so many students that needed supports in the upper grades and the deficiency was phonics. And we swung that pendulum back and now we're seeing that we are gaining, we are making great strides in that area and now we're able to kind of pull back a little bit and work more towards comprehension and vocabulary and bringing more grade level skills into our intervention support services as well as with our tier one students. This is grades four, five and six for DIBELS. You will notice with them that we were pretty much steady across the board at the beginning of the school year. However, I'd like to say that we've done a really great job with comprehension because pre-pandemic, thirty-seven percent of our students were emergency in fourth grade and then it went up to forty-seven percent of our students being emergency and now we're at thirty-four percent. So there's some progress there. And in fifth grade, forty-five percent of our students were emergency in the MACE and now we're down to thirty-two percent of them being emergent. And in sixth grade for MACE, fifty percent of our students were emergency and we're down to twenty-seven percent of our students being in emergency in that category. So this just reiterates in writing what I said was our areas of focus for each grade level according to the sub-test in DIBELS. For I Ready Reading, we're pretty steady at the beginning of the year for the last three years. Even our green, we've been at twenty-six, twenty-seven percent. Our reds, twenty-seven, twenty-five, twenty-seven percent as we're going through and the same with the one grade level below and this is I Ready Reading. The same icons will be on here as well, so you can track the students from last year to this year. So you'll see the triangles again, the arrows, the sun, a cloud, there's different ones added on here. But kindergarten did much better than last year. If you remember when I gave this presentation, I said this was, this group of kindergarten students were the lowest kindergarten students that have ever come in. So I wanted to highlight, when you see here where the triangle is, ninety-two percent of them were not ready for kindergarten and in first grade, they did make some gains. We have eighty-one percent, but we have a bigger percentage that were, that are red, eleven percent. And I Ready says the kids that score in the yellow, the one grade level below, they're ready for grade level material. They're ready to be pushed for grade level material. It's the red, that's the two grade levels below and the three grade levels below that you start to see. From kindergarten, we had seven percent of the students were green and then in first grade, eleven percent. Ninety-two percent of those students were yellow, eighty-one percent are yellow in first grade. When looking from first grade to second grade, you'll notice that fifteen percent of the kids were on level. When they got to second grade, twenty-six percent of them were on level. Seventy-six percent of the kids were one grade level below and we're at forty-five percent of the kids being one grade level below. Unfortunately, our two grade levels below did grow from second grade to third grade for the beginning of the year. Nine percent were two levels below and then they got to second grade and twenty-nine percent are two grade levels below. Taking a look at sixth grade, there's more kids on level this year than there has been in previous years and the red is trending down, which is what we want to see. It's, it's slight, but it's there. So I wanted to make sure I highlight that. How do we compare to the state and into the national norm? So we're a little bit below the state in reading. They had thirty-one percent green, which was early on grade level or mid or above and we're at twenty-seven percent. The national norm was thirty-two percent. And analyzing the grade level data, grades kindergarten, second, third, fourth, fifth and sixth relatively were the same as the state and the national norms. The first, first grade students had less green, but they had more yellow and they had less red. And we want to see less red, more yellow, more green. So key takeaways from I Ready Reading, majority of our students are scoring in that one grade level below category. Compared to the state and national norm, the number of students meeting expectations are below at about five percent. We have ten percent more of our students at one grade level below than the state and we have seven percent less students in the lowest levels. Our areas of focus according to the sub-test data in I Ready is informational text, comprehension of informational text and vocabulary. Taking a look at I Ready Math, because we have a slight, slight uptick in the percentage of kids that are in the green levels and a slight below the kids for the red levels from two years ago, but relatively the same, not huge, not huge gains. From grade level to grade level, we want to see that green get bigger and that red get smaller. We've been relatively stable at the beginning of the year for each grade level. And again, I have the shapes in there if you wanted to go back and see how the cohort of students did from one grade level to the next. Compared to the state of New Jersey and to the national norms, we are the same as the state when you're looking at the green. We're below the state and the national norms for red, which is good. And we're above the state in the one grade level below. In analyzing grade level data, grades kindergarten, first, third, fourth, fifth and sixth are right on par with the state and a little bit below the national norm. And our second grade performed better than New Jersey and the national norm. So key takeaways again for math, where majority of our students fell in that one grade level below category. Compared to the national norm and New Jersey, the percentage of students meeting expectations is equal. We have thirteen percent more of our students are at the one grade level below than the state and national and we have twelve percent less students in the lowest levels. Our areas of focus in math is numbers and operations and geometry. Geometry is still recovering from the pandemic. It was the unit that we did not get to. And then I Ready does not have a lot of lessons actually on geometry. They're, they have more lessons in numbers and operations, algebraic thinking. So we're looking at how to supplement that in the classroom. Our math interview data, grades K through two and our math reasoning inventory data that in grades three through six. Remember, this is the one-on-one interviews that the teachers do with the students and they're assessing whether the students are using the most efficient and effective mental math strategies to solve problems that involve addition, subtraction, multiplication and division. So in kindergarten, we took a step back the last two years and we did a different screener for the very beginning of the year. They do number identification fluency and counting and this kindergarten class is a little bit stronger than last year's kindergarten class in both of those areas. In first grade, not bad for the beginning of the year considering they were the lowest, the lowest group of kids that we had come into kindergarten last year. So I know you don't really have anything to compare it to in kindergarten because we just did number identification and fluency, but the green here is relatively the same across the years and that's a good thing, that they made a lot of growth from kindergarten to first grade. The second grade data is holding steady for the past three years for beginning of year. And in third grade, we only give the addition and subtraction portion of the MRI and it's with whole numbers and that last year was the first year we gave this assessment and it's relatively the same. In fourth grade, they are given whole numbers, addition, subtraction, multiplication and division. And there was a lot of growth between the percentage of students that are in the green, that meeting from fifty-two percent to seventy-two percent and a shrink in the red, which is exactly what we want to see. Our fifth grade MRI is whole numbers and it's looking at the security and it's relatively stable the last three years. And of course, the area of focus here when looking at the sub-test data and breaking it down is multiplication and division. So hitting that a little bit harder. In sixth grade, the MRI is fractions and decimals. So it's being able to add, subtract, multiply and divide with fractions and decimals. And as you can see, every year our kids are getting stronger and stronger with those So utilizing effective math strategies is steadily improving each year in both of the assessments that we're giving for math. So our plans for improvement, and this comes from all of the assessments that I have talked to you about tonight. Increasing the phoneme segmentation fluency activities in kindergarten and first grade. We boosted them last year in kindergarten for the second half of kindergarten and you can see that they made a big impact on the first graders when they came back in. So continuing to do that in both grade levels. We will be building fluency, accuracy and automaticity in the lower grade levels. Have an increased focus on comprehension strategies, especially for informational texts. We are looking to strengthen and build oral language skills in the lower grade levels with, in the upper grade levels focusing more on text structure to help them comprehend the content in the texts that they're reading. We have a writing focus in grades K and one, the teachers are working with Teaching to Transform, which is an outside company that we have brought in to provide professional development to work with the teachers as well as the students. Grades three through six are working with the ELA instructional coach to fine-tune their writing units and their lessons. And formal writing standards are being assessed in both science and social studies starting in second grade. So yes, they're doing informational writing in ELA, but they're also doing it in science and social studies. The math focus area in grade three through five for, according to our NJSLA data is in major content, which is the grade level standards. And in sixth grade is additional and supporting content. Our math focus area is for I Ready is numbers and operations and geometry. We're looking, we have a professional development goal this year of increasing student accountability, confidence and independence. What does that look like in the classroom? Focusing on our tier one point five students, which I'll explain to you in a, in a minute, but our tier one point five students are those bubble students. They're on the cusp of becoming a tier two or they're, or they can be pushed to be a true tier one student. So just, we are looking to focus in on those students and support that areas of need in both, in both ELA and math. Looking to stabilize our teacher turnover because that has an impact on our student data as well. We are transitioning discussions with staff and our support service services for students to be, have more grade level concepts. We're able to hit those grade level concepts rather than having to go so far down in the interventions that are needed. And looking to engage students in conferences to set goals, monitor progress and reflect on how they're progressing through their goals. So here's the number of students that we have in each tier. Now, I developed, I know, usually you hear tier one, tier two, tier three. I explained to you guys a few years ago that we have a lot of students that need intervention and we took a look and we defined what is intervention and what is remediation. And we had so many kids that needed intervention that we tiered those intervention students as tier two and tier three. And those are the only students that we really had the staff to be able to see. Now we're starting to see more students ready, but not quite ready to fly on their own in the tier one. So for me, I've labeled a group of students tier one point five. These are the students that need more remedial support. They do have grade level concepts, but they need that remedial support. So we're looking for the tier two and tier three to shrink. Eventually those tier one point five kids would be the tier two kids. And that will be able to differentiate between remediation and intervention. We're, the instructional coaches are meeting with different grade levels to create plans for the tier one point five kids and honing in on where are their areas of weakness, where are their areas of strengths and how are we going to see them during the school day and provide that small group instruction. So we, we do not tier the kids in kindergarten until after the winter data, but for first grade, this is for ELA, we have twenty-five tier one point five students. Tier two and tier three, we have twenty-six and twenty-two for a total of forty-eight. The one point five students are not in the total for the tiered students because we don't send home a letter to the parents. They're not seeing a VSI teacher, they're not being pulled out of class, they're being seen by their classroom teacher. In grade two, we're starting the year off with thirty-three, seventeen in tier two, sixteen in tier three. In third grade, we have eighteen students at tier one point five, tier two at twenty-seven, tier three at twelve and a total of thirty-nine. We have twenty-two students in tier one point five in fourth grade, seventeen students in tier two, sixteen students in tier three with a total of thirty-three students. In fifth grade, it's a little bit muddy with the data, but tier one point five is eleven. The tier two, there's a tier two class and a tier three class, they're intervention classes. So in tier two class, there's twenty students. In a tier three class, there's fifteen. And then there's three students in the grade level that are not in one of those classes, but they have been, they are tier three, they're students new to the district and they're seeing the reading specialist for a total of thirty-eight. In sixth grade, we have eleven students that are tier one point five, twenty-two that are tier two, twelve that are tier three with a total of thirty-four students. This is our math students. So in first grade, we have thirty-six tier one point five students, twelve tier two, seven tier three. Out of those tier two and tier three students, one tier two student has been referred to the child study team. Whether that occurred over the summer at the end of the year, the testing isn't complete and one tier three student was referred to the child study team for a total of twenty-one students in first grade. For second grade, we have twenty-nine students in tier one point five, tier two, thirty-five students, tier three, three students with a total of thirty-eight students. For grade three, we have thirty-six tier one point five students, tier two is fifteen, tier three is thirteen with one having a child study team referral for a total of twenty-nine. Grade four, we have a lot of tier one point fives, forty-six students. Tier two is at sixteen, tier three is at six. There's one tier three student that is not in the intervention room, so that's why they're listed separately as a pullout for tier three for a total of twenty-three students. And in fifth grade, we have thirty tier one point five students. We have a tier two class that has eight students in it and then there's another, there's another ten students that are tier two for a total of eighteen tier two students. And in tier three, we have thirteen students in the tier three class. One new student that came into the district that we did not want to move his class, but he will be seen by a tier three interventionist for a total of thirty-two students in fifth grade. For sixth grade, we have a total of twenty-one students. We have ten students in the tier three classroom. We have another ten students in the tier two classroom and we have twenty-nine tier one point five students. So looking at our district goals, these are the goals that are on the board agenda for approval tonight. Three years ago, we came to you with a three-year goal for I Ready and the percentage of our students meeting their stretch growth. This slide looks different than what's on your computer because I moved the red circle and put in a green circle. The red circle, bless you, was the baseline data. So three years ago, for reading, we only had twenty-nine percent of our students in tier one that met their stretch growth. In tier two, our baseline data was twenty-two and a half percent of the students and in tier three, only seventeen percent of them were meeting their stretch growth. As you can see here, twenty-one and twenty-two, here was our goal, but here was our actual and we surpassed our goal. So in twenty-two, twenty-three, here was our goal and here was what we actually did, which we surpassed in tier two. We fell short in tier one and tier three. We still adjusted and we are asking that you approve the goal for, we are asking for five percent more of the students meeting their stretch growth in there. So if you take a look at our baseline data, from the first year that we did this, we were at twenty-nine percent of the students. We're looking at an increase of forty-six percent of them meeting their stretch growth through I Ready. In tier two, we were at twenty-two and a half and we're looking at forty-six, which is an up, increase of twenty-three percent of our students. In tier three, we were at seventeen percent and we're shooting for thirty-one percent, which is an increase by fourteen percent of the students meeting their stretch growth. For the math goal, we are looking at our baseline over here in the red. Our tier one students, only fifteen percent of them were meeting their stretch growth. Tier two was sixteen percent, tier three was fourteen percent. Twenty-one and twenty-two, our goals were twenty-five, twenty-two and twenty. Our actual, we surpassed it, twenty-seven, thirty and twenty-three. So we set goals for twenty-two and twenty-three to be at thirty-five, thirty-four and twenty-seven. Our tier one kids knocked it out of the park. Fifty-eight percent of them met their stretch growth. Forty-one percent of the tier two kids met their stretch growth and there was a little bit of a decrease here in tier three. We're still looking to increase this by our tier one students, sixty-three percent of them meeting their stretch growth, forty-six percent of tier two meeting their stretch growth and twenty-eight percent of tier three meeting their stretch growth. That was a lot, that is all I have. Questions? Yes?
When did we identify that I Ready Math did not have geometry yesterday?
This past year. Have enough geometry lessons. We have had it for several years, but we've never even gotten to the, been able to get to the point to even break it down to geometry. It's always fallen in the algebra and algebraic thinking and numbers and operations.
And will we And will we, identifying if this year will be able to get supplemental math to the students this year?
Yeah, so our, our program, Ready Classroom Math, has geometry in it, but it's the I-Ready that falls short on the kids that need those lessons, so the coaches are identifying how they're going to strengthen that, what lessons they're going to use. There are more lessons, there's another part, component of I-Ready that's called the teacher toolbox, and that has intervention lessons. That's where we're seeing that there isn't a lot in the toolbox, so that's why they're supplementing there. You're welcome.
The percentages that we were given at the end of last year for meeting the goal have changed. So, we were, we were told, within the presentation you gave us in June, only 39% of the tier ones students met, but this one says 41.
For ELA or math?
Yes, it's a different percentage. Only 37.5, or sorry, yeah, 37.5 for tier two, this one says 41. 27 for tier three, this one says 26. And the math is different as well, so I'm wondering, what percentage are different between the two presentations?
They're different because the testing wasn't all complete. I had to get that done for you guys to be able to get your super evaluation done in timely fashion. So when I gave you that data, there was probably, that was 90%, of it was incomplete, we're still making, doing some makeup in this.
Okay, so when you look at the 2020 and then to the 2000, and I just have questions about my head, because we worked a lot of this presentation until today.
Yeah.
Although according to our policy, it's supposed to be in the agenda on Friday. Off the top of my head, though, from 2020 to the 2023 school year, how many kids is that between? Do you know what that number is? And how much of the 29% was the number of kids at tier one that made that, was on our goal, as compared to the 46% now? Like, it could be a different number, obviously a different number, but it may not be a large spread of a number, because we don't know how many kids unless you know, how many is 29%? How many is 46?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I do know them from, in the program. We have the numbers.
And the reason I ask this is because I calculated it on the numbers that were given in the end of last year. And for the goal that we approved, and this wasn't even, and this isn't even talking about tier one and tier 1.5, because now we have tier one in a district goal, but we don't have tier one in the information we're giving for remediation and so on. And that's been, been articulated out. So we have tier one, the tier 1.5, tier two, and tier three. So if you look at, and this was just governed by the numbers we have in the end of last year, our reading, our goal was basically accomplished to get 15 kids per grade level to get stretch growth. Okay? For math, for tier two and tier three, it was six kids per grade level to get stretch growth. So unless we, I think, as we see the numbers, what that 46% entails, because then the other question I have is, do children move? They move from tier two to tier one to tier three. So how do you accommodate for those movements when you look at that kind of a percentage of goal?
It depends, so these are only, this is only based on I-Ready. So I-Ready tiers them based only on I-Ready data. And then it puts them, according to their baseline, into the, into the tiers. So if they're in tier one at the beginning, that their stretch growth is this many points. Their typical growth is this.
Are they in our tiers?
No, I've explained that every year. For the I-Ready goal, it's the I-Ready tiers, that this is a goal solely based on I-Ready.
Well, I think it would be prudent for us to have an idea of the number that this needs goals of children, this effect, as opposed to a percentage. Because you could have 46% of 30 kids, or you could have 46% of 105 kids. That's a big difference. And that's, that's, thank you, that's my question.
Yeah, you're welcome. Anything else?
Yeah, I have a question on, like, for example, trying to find the slide here, on the slide, separate page seven. When, when we look at these different groupings of individuals, are they administered to see testing or not, right?
Hold on.
Like, somebody that has a five hour work plan, are they given to see testing?
Oh, this is state testing, yes.
Same thing with the specialty?
Yep, they have to take the same assessment, but they have accommodations and modifications in their plan. So they might be able to have extended time or small group.
With all the same testing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, everybody.
Is there any other one? We have a first public comment portion per item pending. Without a motion, we enter the public vote section. All favor. Anyone in the public make a comment on any items on our agenda. Seeing no other made a motion, we close the public vote section.
Second.
All favor.
Five for five.
You have an executive session listed this evening to discuss personnel, legal matters, as well as contract issuances and litigation. Forty-five minutes, thirty minutes, or we also need to, before we get to our board self-evaluation, is that a suspected power question for that? Okay, we have thirty minutes, thirty, forty, fifty minutes. So without a motion, we have the executive session. Thank you, second. All favor. Executive, seven thirty-five, one second. All favor. School board president report, I don't have anything specific to report this evening. Mrs. Casselli, you had a medical emergency, she's unable to be here this evening, so just remind everyone of the upcoming intervention. I think there's an email that Trish sent out about your badge claiming and whatnot, so if you have, if any people have any issues, just hold it, Trish. But the badge, you claim at the, at the actual convention.
So, I have to check in.
They have a kiosk up front, so. And then you will be setting out a spreadsheet, Trish, or different programming, and that sort of thing.
Yes.
What, the, the educational programs. B O E, the A I S O report, sorry, I don't have a written report.
I have a written report, thank you.
Sure, go ahead.
I went to Lither on, for First Friday, and it was an amazing journey, going through the various classrooms, the diversity going on, so much energy with the kids, with the teachers, there was a lot of teamwork with students. They were learning map and day, they're learning balloon art, all kinds of different projects. And I spent a good hour there, and thank you, Mr. Peters, for touring me.
Thank you.
It was really a great, I'll be at the next First Friday.
Were you going to participate in one of the other?
I could, yes.
First Fridays are best.
Any other leaders on the board?
Can we get the link sent back out? I can't ever find it.
It's on the locker, every, every meeting, if you go under old business.
Oh, it's under old business?
Well, actually, it just got sent.
We just, we just created it, just, between the last.
No, it was a weekly update, sorry. Yes, we sent it a weekly update.
You live close to the library, I guess.
Yeah, but it is in the library.
That's what I thought, it's not in there.
It's not in there?
Are we looking?
Yeah, if you sign it, it's.
Oh, yeah, I'm looking at it now. I'm on it now.
It's just in your Google Doc, in your email.
It's in the library.
Yeah, it's there. Want to show?
Just go to the library.
Under.
Click on it.
You're not good.
Are you signed in?
Yeah.
You may have to sign out and sign back in if you haven't signed in with Dr. Sometimes it doesn't connect. It's possible, maybe not, but it is definitely in there.
Well, if you can't buy it.
Yeah.
If you don't have it. We have our minutes, we have our minutes from September the 18th, work session, as well as our board retreat minutes from the 28th. Everybody got enough to review those? I'll make a motion to approve the minutes listed, if I have a second.
Second.
Any revisions or comments or questions? If not, all favor.
Hi.
Any objections? Human resources, just what we reviewed in the back. Is there any questions on human resources? I'll make a motion to approve human resource items, G1 through G12, recommended by the superintendent, if I have a second.
Second.
Any other comments? Trish, go.
Doyle? Yes. Pregosa?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Trace?
Yes.
Bellis?
Yes.
Korwanski?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries?
All right, we have our education items.
Education items, H1 is just a quick little field trip over to Operations Safety, right here, the campground, just in preparation for their time outside. Excited about that. Two is nothing, three, professional development, items there, listed. Four is empty. Five, we have a couple of private students, this is empty. Six is the annual housekeeping, this is nursing service in plan that reflects the 22, 23 data of nurses. Seven, this lady's side is the district goals, that was a goal reviewed in the title for consortium, that we want to, please, roll which to initiate. So, that's education.
Any questions? I have to approve education items, H1 through H7, as recommended by the superintendent, if I have a second.
Second.
Any other comments? Trish, you go.
Kylas?
Yes, through 1 through 6, but no for 7.
Korwanski?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes, no to 7 district goals.
Doyle?
Yes.
Pregosa?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Trace?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries?
General administration.
Just normal, normal items, department attendance, listed, discipline table, and I find.
Any questions? I have a big motion for general administration items, I1 through I6 is recommended by the superintendent, if I have a second.
Second.
Any other comments? Trish?
Cunningham?
Yes.
Doyle?
Yes.
Pregosa?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Trace?
Yes.
Bellis?
Yes.
Korwanski?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries?
All right, operations.
Yes. We have claims and inferior to start off, and item number one, there was a goal that was added, according, obviously, higher than yellow, you might need time to review. Any questions? See, now moving on. Items two, three, and four are for the month of August 2023, budget transfers, secretary report, and the treasurer report. None for the cafeteria report yet. Do have a school service director, so she's still making a little bit to get activated, but most of the operations. Item six, we do have five students listed for out of district placements. All noted as homeless. Seventh, we have in district, all is received. Great students. Eight, nine, 10, and 11 are non. Item 12, we have two user facility requests, the Monster Mash, the M J parking lot, and then the holiday with the hero, as we did last year, with Franklin Township, first responders. Questions on those items?
Are they still doing that with Walmart?
It's December 9th, we'll start with, then the buses take the kids over with the first responder, Walmart.
Are we doing the breakfast, like we're providing the breakfast?
They, they provide the food, we're just providing the space, and then we're providing the buses and driving.
Thirteen non, and fourteen scared to say a budget timeline for the 24, 25 budget.
Just do it.
And that's operations.
Any questions? Hearing, I have a big motion to approve operations, the items, J1 through J14 is recommended by the superintendent, if I have a second.
Second.
Any other comments? All, all, please.
Michael?
Yes.
Trace?
Yes.
Bellis?
Yes.
Korwanski?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Uh, yes, sorry.
Doyle?
Yes.
Pregosa?
Yes, let's see, J1, Bellis too.
Del C items?
Yes.
And Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries?
All right, we can only have our whole business, first things, the board goals, and if this is a purpose, spot, if I may, I want to discuss the board self-evaluation. Everything was sent out, you guys, I think, after our last discussion, very discussion items, and what we reported.
Well, I think a lot of us were understanding that our tree was going to be based on that as well. So, I don't know where to go forward with the evaluation that we did, but that's obviously a decision.
I don't have any specific ideas, would we have any suggestions?
No, I'd like to ask some suggestions.
All right. Anyone?
It was limited discussion, the board retreat, because I didn't think that was going to be the reason we were having the board retreat.
Right.
So I think there was a discussion about it, open the numbers, but we really didn't view the findings, because we didn't have it at that time.
Right, exactly.
So that, you know, I don't know where we go forward with doing that as a group.
Well, I mean, that's why they were sent out, and I think we had input on the findings this evening, wanted to discuss them. That's what, why I brought it up, is that, interesting, want to set aside the time and future to do that, certainly, so. Well, I did ask Mr. James, he informed me it's a public content issue, so it's not something that we can discuss in executive session. So we have to set aside an executive item at some point. If there's an appetite to do that, please, try to. So if there's nothing else, the board calls, we have the yearly planning calendar, just the year information, and then we have the feasibility study, hybridization, consolidation committee, that report listed. I know Michelle and Barb, I was intending that, Barb's not here this evening, so if you have anything you want to report on that.
Basically, we met on October 6th at DESI in the middle school community center. There were representatives from, obviously, our, ourselves, Del C, Franklin, Elton, and I'd say the meeting lasted for maybe an hour, but a majority of what came out of it, especially from our side, was we were looking to see a timeline, like, what are we looking at in terms of the study, and how quickly, once we have the study, could consolidation possibly go out further? So what they're doing is they're going to fast track the study, so that we can, should be able to have results presented to us in December. If they were acceptable, then we could as quickly have a vote out to the public table. That's probably the best way we can do it now, that, again, that's not just talking us, that's everybody who's involved. We did question if someone didn't like what was going on with the other participants. Could the other participants go with it instead? And they said, yeah, they could just kind of tweak what we need to tweak, tweak what we need to tweak. So we won't really know anything until December. They're going to meet with us and share the line that they have. And then from there, it'll be each board discussing whether or not what's presented to them is feasible and acceptable. And if that comes to there, then it needs to go out to the voters. So that's pretty much what came in. And we didn't set the next meeting. Basically, we just figured it was going to be something, whatever that, you know, however quickly we can be. And if anybody has had questions.
Just one thing I would add, we talked a little bit about the retreat. Yeah, that report may be done in December, but we really see the board members on January, first week of January. So yeah, the report will be done, but probably the invitations for all boards that are going to have members to listen to that.
So I have a question that you probably don't have any particular. Who decides whether it goes to the, the boards? And so in the case of Delcie, they, if we decide to go to vote, Elton decided to go to vote, Delcie doesn't get a vote?
Delcie's considered. Not each vote, each board gets. Not each board. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but Delcie doesn't have necessarily.
Yes, that would be considered part of it. So it would be Franklin, that could be Franklin and.
So Franklin, this, this board could decide not to put it out to vote. Elton could decide to put it not out to vote. Delcie could decide to put it to a vote and go to Franklin and Elton voters. Yeah, so you got.
Yeah, you did.
No, I honestly.
Okay, so, so if Franklin puts it to a vote, Elton puts it to a vote, regardless of what Delcie does, it goes to the voters.
I believe that a board can put it to vote, even though, so if Delcie didn't want to, if we do, we can put it out for a vote.
But Delcie doesn't necessarily, wouldn't go to a vote for anybody because they don't necessarily have a constituent seat, so to speak, right?
Yeah, so it's the, it's the local districts.
Local districts, okay.
No, there's got to be, obviously. Consensus, understanding the, how to do it.
But they don't, they essentially don't have to take a vote and their board is sent to the voters because they're not.
Yeah, ultimately, they, they can discuss this, this in the executive session with the O E P. That's correct.
I said it's confusing.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. It can be, especially if there's not.
A concession.
If there's not agreement.
Right.
Right.
If there's not agreement, that, that doesn't mean you can't go forward with the project. It just means it's complicated and you have to be involved.
And there's no involvement from any other government entities, like locally, right, to the couch and committee? That's their perfect, the plan or anything like that here, right?
I think it's approved by the voters. Now, if it's approved by the board to vote, I think it has to go up to the state to get a.
Yeah, the, um.
The commissioner.
Yeah, but he said that's pretty much, that's just the signature.
The state, obviously, the state wants this to happen, so they're going to.
Just see that would be a whole one.
Is there a specific, a specific time impacting it?
Well, the votes that can happen in September, November, December, January, those are the months of the year that can be put this out. So.
It's true, it's a separate time.
Right, obviously, December. So he, he said possibly it would be the earliest if we could get a vote in the next available. Go through the months then.
It'll be a special.
Yeah, with special.
But only if we agree as well.
You're going to put it out to the voters?
Yeah.
And we, can we do it with a regular election? If we say choose it?
Yeah, November's on, yes. Yeah, November's on, so it could be like September, November, December, January, April.
That's pretty, probably, not probably, that most time.
Right. November.
That's true.
So, yeah, that's, that's pretty much where we're at because we see what they want.
So any, any, look, anything to add to that? I don't mean play on the spot by that, like you're kind of, you're not representing. Or are you?
I was not at the meeting.
Who on your board is on that?
The president, Barbara, and Stephanie Angles.
What did your board makeup look like in January? Do you have, do you have?
We have two, we have two that are running, so.
You have two open seats, two people that are running, so those two individuals will be on the board for the year.
They probably won't, but they might.
The election could be factored in multiple districts houses.
So that's.
So the elections could be factored in multiple places.
Okay. So is that, you have other dates out or waiting?
No, it's made for December, that's going to be the next one.
Yeah, like Troy said, I guess we need to decide what I'm not rashing, have the plan presented. It was, right?
I would think, well, let's get done before we start scheduling. You know, let's let them finish up if they have any snacks in the program.
Well, what was the consensus of your steering committee meeting? Like, was that discussed or?
In terms of?
Terms of the timing of the presentation of the plan?
Well, we, Franklin, were the ones that were asking about the time, right? How quickly would it be done? And nobody was asking or voicing any concerns with that or asking if it's more feasible to draw out the process. So it didn't seem that it was against getting this to the public if that's what we want to do as quickly as possible.
But there was no discussion about the timing of the presentation of the plan or anything?
No, just that.
Just when the plan.
Or, yeah, possibly December and then, you know, I mean, I'm sure if we're going to try and do it quickly, it'll be a pretty quick top turnaround.
Do you, do you envision, like, did you guys discuss how that, like, legitimately worked? Do you envision the plan being presented to all parties at the same time?
That's what I envisioned, but I don't, I don't know if he, if they're planning on coming to each board.
I think they'll, they'll do.
Whatever we want, yeah. I mean, if it's, I don't know. We may, you know, if it's more something where, I don't know if it's more feasible because there are so many parties that they go to each board because there'll be so many people involved in the voting process as opposed to just one, two facilities.
Right.
We have four. So I don't know what, what they'll do once they have the study. They'll basically come to, they might reach out to Pierre or the superintendent's tour and be like, you know, for each board, would you rather just come as a committee, would you want us to come?
Right.
I mean, I don't know if we have a preference of what we want to do, but.
Well, it'd be interesting to hear other individuals' input on it as far as other boards are concerned. So if we're not there to hear that, you know.
So they're going to have different questions.
Right, I assume there'd be a lot of overlapping questions. I mean, in my mind, it makes sense to present it cohesively altogether, but logistically, like, I mean, it might be a big, large person.
We'll all learn from each other.
Yeah, but I guess that's something to discuss with, with that moving forward. I mean, I don't know what kind of public turnout there would be for that, so we just got to talk about the facility, you know.
It could be a lot.
Correct. Okay, was there any other questions? Uh, move on to new business, which I see.
Yeah, I just put out here, policy committee, I put November seventh, that is two, I believe that's election day, so I don't know if that.
I don't care with it. I can do it anytime.
Yeah, it's time.
So you just want to stick with four?
November's good.
Are you, do you have school?
Yeah, but I can get here at four.
Okay, four's good. Are you ready?
Four, good, okay. I'm actually made, if I can get it done, I may mail it in hours later, just so maybe you can get some pre-reading and try to help them. Okay, great.
All right, public comment, make a motion up to the public, have a second.
Have a second.
All in favor? Anyone from the public wish to comment? Make a motion, we close the public, have a second.
Second.
All in favor? Next meeting is November the thirteenth, six P M, work session regularly. Uh, any other comments, questions from anyone? Uh, make a motion to adjourn, have a session.
Second.
All in favor? Our turn.